We're going to get started. First, thanks for coming out tonight. First, I'd like to introduce our new first selectman Bob McGee, who has a few remarks, and then we'll get going.
Good evening, everyone. I too would like to thank all of you for coming out and particularly thank all of you who were here who were part of the charrette session. Over 250 people participated in one more book day. Thank you very much for the effort. To be honest here, I had a chance to get a sneak peek at some of the final report. I was very interested to read the findings. I think there were some good ideas. I think we've got some great opportunities that this report presents. And now it's up to us to see what, decide what we want to move forward with. Now, it's an exciting time. I think we can do some really good things for Higginham Center. I look forward to working on that, to hearing the details on the report, and then going forward. So again, thank you for coming tonight.
Our consulting team has been working hard for the last month and a half, going through all your lists and your charts and your maps and everything else that you worked on for those two days, and looking for consensus on what to recommend. You're coming up with the recommendations based on their professional credentials. I was thinking about it between Xenia, who was here, and Terry and I, we have, you know, each of us probably has about 35 years of experience doing this. And when you factor in John Mullen, that's about 100. If you factor in John's experience, we're almost at 150 years of experience working on cities and towns throughout New England, doing exactly this. Everybody has a good track record of getting things accomplished. And I think that's the big issue that when we started this is how are we going to get things going? How are we going to jumpstart this process? And that was really the idea of the 90-day action agenda, which you're going to see presented. This is how we can start things going right away, effective January 1st. These are the things we have to get going on. So you'll see that in the presentation, which I think is so very important. So without any further ado, I hand it over to John Mullen for the presentation.
Before I get into it, where is the first select person? I do have a select person's story. Three of my brothers were elected selectmen in a town surrounded, a town I grew up in, Massachusetts. And two of them were from towns that were fighting for 25 years over sewer capacity. And so my two brothers ran on a platform of fighting the other town for more capacity. But finally, they decided that my mother would referee it, and she handled that quite nicely. So I want you to know that the first thing is that family is important. The second is that I broke in and planning in New England about 1980. And one of my first jobs was in a town called Schelmont, Massachusetts, way up on the Mohawk Trail. And in the proposal, they put in that I had to bring in the wood for the town planning office, put it in a fireplace, and start it up before the meetings. And I hooked in here, this bill. I had shivers, Bill, that I was going to be required to start the fire.
I said it would be nice if we had a fire.
What we're going to do tonight is this. I'm going to start off, move to Terry, and then I'll come back and put a closing statement. And then we're going to open it up to you all. The presentation is such, in fact, go to the next one. The team, of course, Xenia, there, Terry, and myself, and the University of Hartford students. You go to the next one. Next. Okay. Now, the process, just to recap where we are. We started off with a meeting with the town planner, gave us a fundamental view of what the town and the village was all about, took a walking tour of the village center, and were surprised what we didn't see as we came to the charrette and people started talking about the hidden parts of your village. We reviewed your previous planning studies and your zoning documents. We looked at the economic development data, became aware of current trends. Did a two-day planning and design workshop. And then we reported on the findings and recommendations that we're going to speak about tonight. Next one, please.
Can I ask you a question, please?
Yes.
Will this be available online, we can see?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a handout tonight?
No, there's not.
We'll post this tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So, very first thing, we'll highlight the findings, make our recommendations. The 90-day agenda, Bill just mentioned this a minute ago. It's one of the biggest wraps that people get on master plans that are done as they sit on a shelf. We found through our scholarly examination and looking at towns across New England, if you have that 90-day window in there and you start fresh, and you start picking up the low fruit, it's amazing how you get the impetus. The key, those plans that work have a tremendous jump if they come to begin to move at the 90 days. So that's absolutely crucial. You want to get specific actions, highlight the plan. We focused on consensus built during the workshop. We took copious notes. We had people listening. Then we went, we examined the previous studies, and we had conversations and input with the town planner to put this into a language that you all could understand. This is the key in terms of tonight, and our job in working with you, is our aim is simply to move the town forward in its desired creative, vibrant, and coherent cohesive center. That's the goal. Next, please. Okay? Let's go to the next one. Now, the very first thing, on the historic character and natural assets. Higginham Center could act as a gateway announces, "This is Adam." "This is a special place." We use the phrase all the time, "Uniqueness, specialty, and cachet." And indeed, that's what we're looking for, and that's what we have. Secondly, the river, the reservoir, Cove, Swan, Healdsfield are hidden treasures and underutilized assets that are valuable to residents and potential tourists. We were surprised in hearing the conversations of how many people didn't understand how many trails you actually had, or that you had never used, or that were too difficult to access. The fact of the matter is you've got these here in a raw sense that could be made much more valuable. I link these natural assets to the center. Protection of historic buildings is absolutely crucial. What happens is getting buildings on the national register brings stability to those buildings, enables investors to come in and say, "Look, we've got something special here." And indeed, it does stimulate growth. Growth that matches the character to that which you already have. New development should integrate with existing historic fabric. Nobody wants, in a whole session, nobody wants high rises. Nobody wants large buildings. People want the buildings that are coming here that reflect the character to that which you already have. Encourage mixed uses. This was across the board. For years and years, planning boards and planners would go out and argue for residential uses over here, investor uses over here, on and on. Everywhere we go, particularly in smaller villages where there's a sense of the scale that you have, the term is, we use "mixed use." We've heard it constantly at the two-day session. And I think when you do read this report, then indeed you'll see this element that flows through it. Should be people-oriented, pedestrian-friendly, and add easy access to those with disabilities. One of the things that we hear is, "We want to behave across the street." "We want our kids to walk safely." And one of the things we are increasingly hearing in our research that if you have a speed limit in your downtown that's faster than 25 miles an hour, the parent will not allow that child to cross unencumbered. So what you have, if you want to have that road be a spine rather than a border, then indeed you have to control that speed and enable, and have the bump outs, and have the crosswalks, and have the necessary lights in order to make sure that what you've got on one side matches the other. It's crucial. At all point, did the road dictate what's going to be occurring on either side, the other joint, the other? Okay. All right. Now, with the 90-day agenda, what are we talking about? That's what we heard. Now, this is what we want you to think about. The town planner, working with the engineer in Concon, would create a map of existing and possible future trails and walkways. Wouldn't it be nice if we could all work on the same page? Wouldn't it be nice if we knew really these all were what they were like? And I think this is a crucial point. Work closely with those promoting the green blue ways. You strategize on enhancing and promoting these connections. And then to find a way to turn it into capital plan to promote the walkway plan in a way that brings value to the community. Remember this, now, 90 days. There's money there. The need is to get more data out there first so that we're all on the same page. And this is the sort of thing that I recommend all the way through. Next one, please. Okay. Now, keep your sceptics system. It was almost universal from the participants at the workshops in terms of, "Look, we need this thing." And it's absolutely fundamental for anything else to generate the village center. You need it. And the thing of it is, your downtown is not going to get better without it. So that's number one. Service fee purposes. Insurance in a failing system. Allow existing buildings to change use and expand. And this system should be brought to a point where it's shovel-ready with detailed costs. In other words, if development is going to come, and then we don't want a developer to come into town and say, "Okay, I'm here, I'll build me a sewer system." We want to have that plan for that system in place so that if it comes, then we can move rapidly. So get the planning done. And then we'd be in a position to indeed become much more attractive to the developers who would be positive for the community. Immediate, 90 days. Remember again, the conversation coming out of the two days? This is what we came up with. Request an amendment to state plan of conservation and development to include the relevant entities. Continue the productive dialogue with the state health department and Department of Environmental Protection. Recommend POCD, Town Nation, create a water pollution control authority and create the plan. Water pollution control authority is something that's going to be necessary to build this system and to bring it in a way that's going to be functional. Should use funding currently available in the capital budget to advance the conceptual plan, prepare the documents. Again, there's money possibly, could be possibly used now in the next 90 days to come out and begin to prepare the plans for this. One of the things that naturally comes out of this is, will it be room for citizen input in it? It has to be, by law. So you will have just as much an opportunity that you're hearing, as you're hearing tonight, to go and comment on these elements. Okay. Now, ATS, passionate issue. It's clear that in the sessions, the people want the ATS property in constant active use. And it kept coming up that if a school could come back in, that would be a decided asset, private school, other educational use. Along with this, the idea of making the ATS a tax-generating use of all the community services. Repurpose it for, again, mixed uses. Kitchen, bakery, theater, space, theater, pop-up markets, recreational activities. I understand the pop-up market being there today? Am I correct? Yeah, somebody told me that. Okay. And then there's a clear desire to maintain the property as community asset in the development of community septic system. So, if we keep it as a school in some way, that's fine. If it's tax-generating, that's terrific. And if it's multiple use for both public and renting it out, that's great. If the town can even make a little bit of money off of it to maintain it, that's even better. And all of those elements we've highlighted in the report. 90-day agenda and use. First selectman and town planner should meet with the private school and to find out, rumors have been going on, maybe not so much rumors, but we've been hearing about a potential school coming in, and we're 90 miles away. And in effect, I think it's time to begin to bring this to a little bit more clarity. I think negotiating these arrangements would be helpful. The adequacy of the commercial kitchen. We pick up on this commercial kitchen because we've seen several places where the Rural Development Development Agency, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and the United States Economic Development Agency in small towns like yours have been promoting the commercial kitchens as a way of private, of people trying to market their own foods, if you will, and make them a way to be sold. And it's something here where there is money available. I hate to talk about my state negatively. Massachusetts, last year, if you have money back, last, on Rural Development Act money, because if you couldn't get the small towns together just to see what could be done with it. And so, we're pushing you on this a bit. The idea of a rural, the community kitchen makes very good sense. Commercial kitchen. The roof is a concern. The capital planning committee should consider allocating funds to repair the roof. No avoidance. Roof doesn't work, can't work a building. And so that, and that's something that needs to be addressed. Okay. The town garage site. There was consensus in the fact that the town garage needs to be relocated. But then, existing building on the site should be rehabbed as a multi-use space. I want to talk a lot about this right now. There are a couple things. Every town center in New England typically has several things. One, it's a retail, it's a retail center. The second is a civic center. The third is a meeting center. And the thing of it is, is that if you're going to have a functional center, you have to have the civis there. You should have a library, you should have a post office, you should have something like a DPW. The question is, is that if this is going to look like a ugly piece of junk, it's not going to work. But we're able to come in, site a DPW place that looks functional and looks nice, and gets rid of the idea that this is a glorified junkyard, then indeed, that indeed has, and is sited in the back, then it is, then it indeed has a possibility. Now, the question is, can this be done? I think we need to take a hard look and see if it can. The idea is keeping the civic where the civic center is, civic uses. Keeping the activity there and having people come through. It is, we found quite often, when the civic uses begin to be moved from a New England town center, it leads to a sense of decay. You already lost your school for a while, maybe permanently. Right? There's need to have this sort of thing. So, we're saying with caveat, that if this was well-designed, well-placed, and well-good-looking, then indeed, it may work. So we're putting that out there for you to think about. And I think, we think that it has merit. Okay. Next one. All right. Rehabilitated as multi-use commercial space. The site should be a scale.
Ask you a question, please.
I'm going to hold.
The third one, which is an existing building on the site. Which site are you referring to there?
The existing town garage.
Where the town garage is right now.
Okay, on the Rossi's.
Yes.
No, no.
On the town.
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to need the referee a bit.
Okay.
I know, ex-army officer. You got, so we can get through. And then there's all the questions you want, and we'll try to answer. Next one.
Scale.
Okay. Yes. Okay, scale.
Is there a way you could, I actually will see it for you.
Claire.
See now?
I can see the cover of the paper. Thank you very much.
All right. See how close we are?
Thank you.
Okay. Reuse of the site should be a scale of the current character center and enhance the connections to the active features as well as the Rossi's site AGS and infill. In other words, it shouldn't dominate. And that's something that came clear. Next one, please. Town should prepare site guidelines and site plan showing existing structures. Work closely with the promoting the green blue way to strategize the road and connections to the stream and other natural resources in the site. And then develop, request proposals to gauge private market interest in the development of the town garage site today. It would be interesting to know. Let's find out if there's potential for it in 90 days. And that will give us an indication in terms of where we want to go on the points coming up. Next one, please. Now, the Rossi's site is the linchpin between the AGS and the town garage. We look at this, in over the next 50 years, we think that this is the most fundamental part of the whole downtown center in terms of potential for growth and change and to come and have it work out in a way that you want. Linking these three. The Rossi's site is now non-conforming, but it has the legal right to intensify uses of the site that would not be in line with desired improvements. Repurpose the Rossi's property for multiple uses, including the town garage and services in the back, small-scale retail activities of residential uses. In the front, with something that we heard quite a bit from you. And in all instances, again, uses should be in scale with the character center. Okay? Now, town garage at the Rossi's site. There is agreement, the current site garage is inadequate. There is no consensus right now on the proposed site. It was almost 50/50. It's our opinion, the well-designed capital place town garage pending assessment in the center. And the town's investment can address the community need after the industry revitalization and control of light improvement and create close-up forefories of land for economic development. They can coexist. Okay? Next one, please. All right. P&amp;Z should prepare a 80-day report to close the Rossi's site. Is it appropriate location for a new town garage? First select person should negotiate a purchase and sale agreement with the Rossi's contingent on all necessary approvals. And the Board of Selectmen should authorize the execution of the purchase and sale agreement when the time is appropriate. So in the next 90 days, that could occur. Continue discussions with DOT. Execute state assistance agreement and prepare a work.
Skip the slide. Skoll.
Sorry? Excuse me?
Did that go ahead?
No, it jumped, it lost the slide.
Skoll.
Skoll property.
Yep, lost the slide.
You Skoll?
Yep.
Okay. Go. This is a gem. One of the things at the university where I do is that I work on old industrial sites. It's one of my specialties. And I would give my eye teeth to have these structures like you've got in your town center. They're absolutely precious. Site needs environmental remediation. The connections to the stream that runs behind the property is strongly desired. The support for multiple uses, including those activities you see there, become important. These are the points that we heard from you at the charrette workshop. Get next. What should we do in the next 90 days? Continue discussions with DOT on the acquisition. Execute state assistance agreement for $200,000 grant. And get the work plan going. And then advertise the work plan and so that we can begin to do work as soon as possible. This all can be done in the next 90 days with the resources that you already have. Next, please. What do you want to say about Route South? Higginham Center is well-respected and provides most of the basic goods required in everyday life. This really is a nice thing, nice item. When you see a center, it handles the functional, everyday goods that people need. And to a great degree, that you have that in your village center. It lacks cohesion and order. Your physical plan to extend sidewalks, curb cuts, to create green space. I think all of you probably recognize from time to time the difficulty of crossing it. And that, and the layout in many ways looks like the early 1960s. And there are ways that these improvements can come. By the way, the phrase "not trade," landscape. Landscape improvements date tons more than the cost. They really do add value, and it becomes an important element. Small-scale retail, commercial uses. The complete streets program, that means, look, the easy way for me to explain that, don't dig up the street just to put a pipe in. If we're going to do anything on the street, we're going to do sidewalk improvements, we're going to do pipes, we'll do lighting, we'll do the bump outs, and make it, make it complete. And what in effect is, we, in many towns, we go, this year we do the electricity underground, that year we do the water and that sort of thing. We don't want that. We're urging you to go out and do the complete streets. And then the way, finally, signs of landscape. Now, next 90 days. And remember again, what we heard, and this is what we're recommending. Detailed build-out map of the center. You know what a build-out map is? A build-out map is a map that looks at not only the structures that you've already got, but what you've got in terms of open land that could be developed on your zoning. There may be, for example, in the middle of a commercial parcel, a grand space that isn't being used, or a fronted space that's not being used. But the fact is, is I mean to know how much more growth you have in your center without changing your zoning, but to see if things, if this would occur. Prepare site guidelines and a site plan. And here, you're lucky that in the United States, the Connecticut Main Street program is hailed as arguably the number one in the nation in terms of planning, providing planning assistance just to your cities and towns. Bring them in. You belong, the author is Bill. You belong to the Connecticut program. And then in effect, come to me and see what they have to say and where the improvements have worked. And I think he'll come back with a bundle of ideas that would be very, very helpful. Okay. Next. All right. Citizen Bank. This is one that is quite troubling to us. It's been vacant since 2018. There's a potential community septic system could create opportunities for it. There's ample street parking in the center. Could be a great location for a restaurant, a brew pub. It is the town's understanding of Citizens Bank's to hold the lease and will not sub-lease to another bank. We don't know how aggressive you want to be on this. There's a thing called the Community Reinvestment Act. It says banks have to be responsive to the needs of your community. If a bank is not being responsive, then it is something that you can go and argue to something, for some change. If the bank is pulling out and is not allowing anyone else in, and there's a bank, there's a need, then indeed, you've got a cause there. At one point, I even asked people where the town places its tax money. And I was hoping it wasn't, I was hoping, actually, it was this bank because then it'd be a case for you to go and say, "Listen, why are you not allowing progress to move forward on?" But in any case, I think you can probably see it in the next slide. Yeah. I think that the select board, we should request a meeting with the executives at this bank to say, "Where are you going with this?" And the thing of it is, is that, and to see if there's a way of moving it forward. I'm sure, I don't know a bank who'd say, "It's good business to allow a perfectly good building to sit there and be not fully used." That's that. Town should explain the septic system proposal and discuss redevelopment options. What we're saying in effect is, it's just not, proposal sitting there without the ability to tie into septic. Sometime it will. And then possible reuse, maybe expansion of current businesses as our new views. If that, maybe in there are businesses that are ready and to expand from your downtown and create advantages. But I think the very first fundamental step here is to really find out what's behind this delay. And if there is a way to get this building up and get back to the some active use. Go ahead. So, finally, on leadership and promotion. Higginham Center needs a voice. And I think it's going to come on people like yourselves. We need to adopt the National Trust for Stirk Preservation Main Street America approach and the Connecticut Main Street example. Center must develop its own unique and specialized image. And to do this, we've got to work with the merchants and existing businesses. And we talked, by the way, in the report about various methods for you to do this. But the fact of the matter is, is that if the businesses have to come together as a joint entity, the town has to have a formal organization that's going to represent the interests. And these have to be working side by side, if not together. Track new investment in businesses that complement existing businesses and address their market gap. You have some categories, Xenia. How much was the market leakage?
The market leakage is just about every category except gas stations and the middle suburbs.
Yeah. Yeah, you're spending far more out of town or basic elements than you could capture here. Have I got it? So, in effect, what we're saying is, you've got the market already here. You just have to keep it at home and not send it off. And then certainly gains for public leadership. From what we've heard so far, indeed, it seems to be coming quite clearly. So, town's economic development committee can take a lead role in revitalization effort. EDC should need to carefully review the findings and become a strong advocate for the center. EDC doesn't become neutral. Once this plan emerges, EDC becomes an advocate. That becomes important. EDC should host the meeting of the Connecticut Main Street Program. And it should establish a Main Street approach to the revitalization of Higginham Center. Now, how are we going to pay for all this? That's the one that everybody worries. One is a capital improvements program. And that indeed, that looks for ways of funding this over time. Second is to come and become grant towns. We've spoken about the severance grants before at the sessions, there are others. And then in effect, if they are there, and I think they can help. And that, the CIP, by the way, is something about the town saying, we're going to commit to the long term, and we're going to commit resources in a capital improvements plan while they improve it downtown. It's going to lead to a strong sense of confidence, a stronger sense of confidence in terms of who we deliver. So, with that, I'll sit down for a while. Terry comes up and gives her part. I come back for conclusion. One minute, and then we'll open it up. Okay? Terry?
Hi, guys. Take a break, take a breath, okay? All right. So, our part of this is to look at those elements of consensus and start to look at some physical planning associated with that. Based on day one and day two, there was a surprising amount of consensus, okay? And the reason why I say surprising is because I've been in a lot of towns, done a number of these, and you don't always find that. What was the consensus in particular was, sort of general terms, which is where we're at from a planning perspective, but the ones that we're specifically interested in for this next phase involve providing more trails and sidewalks, okay? There was, and in the next slide you'll see, there was essentially 100% consensus that we need to connect things, connect the trails, the sidewalks, do it in an obvious and attractive way, okay? To then provide stream bank trails. We've got three streams that run through the middle of the center. How do we make those actually visible? Has anybody seen them? I've seen them because I went through the weeds to go take pictures of them. But it does take a little bit of effort to do that. But it wouldn't take that much effort to actually make them visible if you do it with intent. Couple other elements, providing, where we have consensus, providing either housing or maker space at the town garage site, and considering the rehab and reuse of the building, which is there. And also to limit, so one of the things that came up was Depot Road, which is basically a great big, open, free-for-all in terms of curb cuts. But how do you set that up? Because that's where the garage and everybody comes in and out of. But that does not make for a friendly pedestrian environment. So if you're walking down Depot Road, you're probably walking down the middle of the road because the sides look like they belong to other uses, let's call it. Other elements that we were looking at was providing green space at the town garage site, specifically along the stream bank trail that's reinforced. And then look at either moving the town garage to either Rossi or out of the center. In this particular case, for the exercise that we are doing, we're assuming that it's moving to Rossi, so that we're looking at that, what that might physically look like. Last couple of elements with respect to the Rossi property, because that's really where we started to focus our site, looking at the site alternatives and options, is mixed use along Sabre Road. Basically, there's a small brick building there that's currently, but right now, there's nothing. There's a couple of sheds that you can see in the back. But what do we do in order to sort of perk that up? Other elements on Rossi, your new buildings potentially along Depot Road. What is it that we want to do? Visually connect the new buildings to the street. Basically, create new building lines, just really make it look different. I think that's the best way to describe it. So those are kind of our go-to ideas that we had in the back of our head when we started looking at what this property really could become. As I mentioned, one of the things that we first did is 99% of the participants indicate that the historic and natural character of the center was important. I think that 1% just was talking to other people, so they both, but 100% indicating that connecting the various different elements to the center mattered. The little sketches on the bottom, if you remember, the University of Harvard students were with us during both of those workshops. They did little sketches that were adding to the report at various different elements to sort of capture some of your ideas. First thing that we put together at Bill's request was to put together an overall connections plan to look at what it was that people really wanted to connect through the, in the center itself and then beyond the center. The obvious elements are the cove, the railroad, and the river, okay? But also the churches and elsewhere up and down Sabre Road, and then whatever can happen down Route 81 to connect the rest of the town. You know, what else is really going on here? So just trying to put together sort of a fundamental look at sidewalks, bike paths, and then the blue ones are all trails. Obviously, it's not complete, it's just a starting point for some of the other discussions that will occur. So then we started looking at the Rossi property, just for purposes of reference here. Up by the word option one, that's HES, okay? The Sabre Road comes down to the intersection, heads out towards the right, towards, to the church. Depot Road is the one in the middle there that crosses through. So the idea was, well, what do we, what do we want this to look like? So, Bill didn't give me on the first one any limitations, okay? So, on this particular one, I said, okay, what is, you know, what could this be? There was a lot of discussion in the workshop, especially day two, about cottage houses and cottage neighborhoods. And one of the things that we discovered is that the Rossi site is not quite as big as everybody thinks it is, okay? So, the cottage homes, which is that photograph on the left, my lefts and rights are not so good, so I point. So what that might look like, nine homes may or may not be worth the trouble at that point, and it really sort of changes the character of the center. So I'm not really convinced that this is the right way to go, but it was one of those things that came up in the workshop. So I said, okay, let's see what it looks like. On Sabre Road, we're looking at a streetscape element of retail and services on the first floor, and then residential potentially above. But we have a unique situation here on the Rossi property. The Rossi property drops about 10 to 12 feet down from Sabre Road, okay? It drops down, which means that any building that you put along the street would probably also have a lower level, potentially, that could serve for not the sort of major streetscape elements, but things like yoga studios and other sort of service-related elements that don't want to have the flash that'd be right on the street, but would still be available. So that building would really sort of provide a building line and an upper plaza and a lower plaza. Everyone would access from the lower level for Depot Road. But we are recommending on-street parking if we convince DOT to do that. It's a little close to the intersection, so I'm not sure that that's going to work, but it would allow people to be able to get in and out of those businesses quickly. Oh, on the old town garage site, on this one, we actually took all the town garage out and built a new building where we were proposing that it would have a deck overlooking the stream and be set towards the rear of the property and have then public parking. And one of the things that we were, we heard consistently in the workshop is the need for like a visitor's center and restrooms, okay? I don't know how many times you all heard it, but I have like ten. But having a restaurant, visitor's center, that with some public parking. And you'll notice the trail, the steam, the stream bank trail that is up at the top of the stream bank as it wraps around to the right, heading towards that building, would then connect across Depot Road. We'd do a little bit more on the intersection of Depot and Sabre, and then ultimately pick up trails that would then continue on through Scoville and elsewhere, in various different directions from Depot Road. But it would start to set that vocabulary up. One of the things that would be required is that the town garage basically is paved and uses all the way to the top of the stream bank. So we would be removing impervious surface, creating a natural buffer between the new parking area and the stream bank to make that more of a park-like scenario, which I think had a lot of appeal. Just a quick cross-section across Depot Road, trying to establish curbs, sidewalks, trees, lights. Down Depot Road would help to extend the streetscape down from Sabre Road and then enable that to then continue down towards the cove. One of the things that is in the recommendations is to look at how you actually get physical access past this particular point, because it's not, it's not simple, and that's going to be one of the big challenges. The other thing that's a little odd is that the sidewalks on Sabre Road die at Depot Road. The bridge does not have a sidewalk that takes you from Sabre Road into Depot Road. It actually specifically ends, and that's where your crosswalks are. So in this particular case, what we're doing is we're trying to get people down into the Rossi property and then use that to access the rest of the pedestrian environment through Depot Road and beyond. Option number two. In this one, the town garage is moved to the middle and rear of the site. We have mixed-use buildings up at the front. But one of the things that, when Bill saw option number one, he said, come on, this isn't practical. You've got to use the existing buildings. So we started focusing on what the existing buildings could remain. So we start with a small brick building up on Sabre Road, see how that would work. There was a lot of discussion, yes or no, about housing in the center versus not housing in the center. This has got a series of units above the retail space on the Rossi property and then on the town garage property, that could either be townhouses or flats, depending on how it was configured. But again, one of the things that comes across in all of this is that neither one of these properties is as big as you think, okay? So even this property, this particular plan, is about 35,000 square feet of street-level retail with about 30 units of housing, and then some ancillary restaurants in additional use. But, and that's not a lot of square footage, it just seems to fit quite nicely on the site. The difficulty is, is then when I run that in terms of how much sewer capacity is going to be required for that. Then the next thing I know, I've already used up about 15,000 gallons of the allocation. And that seems to over-maximize this particular property. So at that point, we wanted to look at really, although we like how the, you know, the streetscape would look and how the buildings relate to the street and everything, that would be great, it just doesn't seem to quite meet our preferences. So after those two exercises, we really started to narrow it down. We want to maintain the existing buildings and use those assets. The Sabre Road, we want to use sort of smaller building forms, because some of the forms that we were using started to get a little bulky. So a little bit breaking it down into smaller forms, forward and back. Develop the stream overlook, that's at the intersection of Depot and Sabre Road. Provide gathering areas or plazas at the upper level, at the lower level, all over, you know, all places that can become that, those kind of gathering places. Address the grade issues, provide easy access to the street levels. The larger town garage use, all the previous versions, the town garage is starting to get a little cramped, and I can hear the highway superintendent telling me, I can't make that work. So how do I make the highway garage more usable and an active, attractive part of the downtown? So that, that's kind of part of the preference. The existing buildings being rehabilitated and limited the number of curb cuts so that we can actually enhance the pedestrian environment. So then we move to option three, which is our preferred one. And you can see that the amount of square footage is really reduced, okay? We have a couple of important things, and I'm not sure, let me just do this, this would be easier. This is the small existing brick building here on Sabre. This is actually the existing town garage building, the historic building. And this is the building that the town garage is currently using. So all three of those buildings remain in this. However, the existing town garage building would be renovated and rehabilitated into like a brewery or something that would work better. It would have a plaza for outdoor dining outside. And the new, and the existing town garage building on the Rossi property needs to get a facelift, right now, it's, it is what it is. And so, you know, what is it that we're trying to do? So we had some ideas here, something that might look like a barn on the side. It really is going to depend on whether or not the existing building needs to be driven through from an organizational perspective, how that would work if we end up with parking out front, or how, you know, exactly how that cross-section works. But it would give a new look to what's going on. The brewery in the town garage building seems to work out pretty nicely. And then you have the enhanced streetscape up on Sabre Road. And I'm going to turn it back to John.
I think it's an awful lot to absorb in one meeting. But I do want, I do want you to think about this. This point, based on more than 30 years of planning and design across the way, we believe the town is well-positioned to tackle the issues. We also believe the issues are clear, and as been pointed out in the sessions that we had with you, the core consensus has been achieved, except for, in a couple of points, they have overwhelming consensus. The priorities have been determined, practical alternatives identified. We've got a very experienced planner in place. Again, very, very rare, you know, experience when all these things are here. All the elements necessary to undertake change are now present and had them. I can't believe how surprised we are, because we very barely see it in our lives. It's here, and it's now, and we summarize this final phrase, it is time for action. And with that, Bill, open, open mic. Open enough for, okay.
Any questions?
Let me, for the record, so if you have a point you want to make, please let us know your name, so that we can get this written down and to contribute it to you, it would be easy to do that. First question. Yes, sir.
I impressed, very good. Just, it is unfortunate that you didn't put an option without the town garage, because it wasn't contested in 50-fifty, but it's a major fault in the novel on there. But there are several successful towns within town, if you look at Liantic, you look at Little Town, you look at Towne Town Durham, where the public works does not necessarily need to be there. I, no, I personally don't believe it needs to be there, but I just want to say that, so unfortunately, we didn't have an option up there that didn't show up, but that's just maybe in the file or wasn't part of it. I think it's kind of time to be on the board of selection. And we have a good, great starting point. Thank you, Bill, for really getting this put together. But I just think we need to look at that. Other than that, I think it's starting to look really well.
The one, the one point that Terry touched on with the town garage and not having the town garage there is you have roughly five acres of land that you don't have the sewer capacity to develop it as the way everybody thought it should be developed. Because of that, the Rossi's have never done anything because it was all contingent on the sewer, on the sewer plant. So I think the conclusion was that we are not going to go out and spend 12 million dollars on the sewer plant, so you can't have five acres of development because you would use up more than the community septic and nobody else would have any. So that's the allocation of space.
Putting sand and salt, once you become a problem, having all this food right near the streams again. the streams again, that's, that's an environment to have a park. It's not a huge property, and I don't think it's a big, really not a big property. You know, making open space, I don't, I don't tell you about it. Personally, I don't think that's a great location for it. There are several successful towns that don't have the public works anywhere near that town.
I don't think this is going to be the final, this is far enough. Yes, sir. You are?
My name's Emily Carroll. Very nice presentation.
Thank you.
Let us see a lot of really good ideas here, and I, I have one question, well, actually I have two questions. The first question is, in your 30 years of experience, have you ever seen a town where they elected to either keep or move the town garage into the center of town?
Yes, I have. More often moved.
But have you, if you have, where was it and why?
I think, oh gosh, you're getting, I will find out for you.
I'd like to know that too.
Go ahead, you got that?
I'd like to know that too.
Where else, where the garage has been moved or not moved?
Either, either stayed, if it was in the town subjectively, where, where it was decided that it should stay there, and then that contributed to the revitalization of the town. Or if it wasn't there, and it was actually moved there, and indeed, it did contribute to the revitalization of the town.
Okay.
So I think.
I think one of the points that you made me helpful is tie that into the Connecticut Main Street people. If you have a list of those in Connecticut, that, that may be your help, too.
And my second question is, you, you put up on one of the slides that there was a 50/50 split between moving the town garage to the Rossi property or some other location. What data is that based on?
So that actually came out from the workshops itself. The first day, we had 14 teams working?
I have it 74 to one undecided.
The first, yes, first day, we had 14 teams. There were six teams, and the sheets are in the report as well. There were six teams out of that that said that it should move to Rossi. There were five teams that said, "Move it right out of town," and there were three teams that did not address Rossi at all, I mean, did not address moving the town garage at all. The second day, we had 11, out of which it was actually five that said to Rossi, five that said out of town, and one that did not address.
I have seven, I had seven that were against moving it to Rossi, four that were for moving it to Rossi, and one that was undecided. That's 74, 11, 12. So your, your data's different from mine. I took the boards.
Probably.
So I'd like to see the boards.
Yeah, I would like to see the actual data.
Yeah, why aren't the boards here from that?
We have, we have all the, we have all the sheets.
Where are they?
And they're scanned in, they're in the report. All the sheets are scanned in. And yes, this is the only one that, that there wasn't full consensus on, was whether you moved Rossi, whether you moved the garage to Rossi or not. Beyond what came out of the charrette itself, we're also, we're also suggesting you look at our opinion as professionals.
Right.
And that's part of it, that's, that's part of it as well. So there's only one other location in town that the garage could move to, from what we've heard from the town engineers and the town planner.
But that's not true.
And, well.
We're not here to argue that. Let me, let me bring it back. You all, you all, I think, I think, no, there are other points, too. I think you made it quite clear what the need is in terms of providing more information on that.
I'd like to ask my own question.
I've got somebody else before you. Can I see the hand? Go ahead.
Hi, my name's George Hammer. Been a resident here for 48 years. My concern, my main concern right now is the moving of the town garage, okay? The Scoville factory, the Scoville Hole factory, may have been an architecturally significant building in the 18th century, but in the 19th century and 20th century, it was converted into the state town garage. It presently consists of 14 garage bays that are 10 and 1/2 feet tall, 12 feet wide, ideal for our own use as a town garage, okay? The property can be obtained from the state for zero money, and you can either spend the money digging up the soils and transporting them to some kind of waste site, that I guess has to be the case, or you can pave the entire area, put a curtain drain on three sections, and keep the pollutants right there in the ground. Our, the only problem the state has is that they leach out into the brook, okay? All right? If you keep rainwater from penetrating that surface, and the town garage would have to be paved, you have essentially a free building that is ideal. Now, I don't know who took over Phil Ross's job, if he's here or not, but please look at that building. I don't know if you guys have seen that building. I was astonished when I drove in there and saw those gorgeous garage doors that would accommodate backloads and trucks with Sanders on them and everything else.
Is this, is this, I think, right here's next.
Hi, this is Bazazi from Higgin, I live in Higginham Village Center, not in the South Center. Anyway, the boards, as I said earlier, my reflection was that there were seven people that were against putting the town garage on the Rossi site. There were four that were for it, and there was one that was undecided.
No, not people, groups.
Groups.
The tables.
Tables.
Right, seven tables.
That's correct. So, and yeah, all three of the schemes that you showed, showed the Department of Public Works on the Rossi property. Now, the town garage in your scheme one and three, you're showing it on an area that's smaller than the existing site. So I don't see the logic in spending millions of dollars, I forget the amount, to move it across the street onto a smaller site than it's in now. If we need a larger site, that's a purpose, that's illogical. So, so that brings it down to one scheme that's possibly even has logic behind it. And the Rossi site is not so small as you mentioned. If you don't put the town garage on it, you actually can do a very small network of streets with housing or whatever, mixed use. And, and then I, I just, I'm kind of surprised, I know you're focusing on these few sites, but it feels like you're drawing energy and attention in a very small town away from our existing main street, which is Route 81, basically, from the rez to, to Seabrook Road. And the lighter, quicker, cheaper approach to revitalizing our village is hands-down infill development between the existing buildings. And we know, you probably have the exact number, but the distance people will walk without getting in their car is less than 1,000 feet. And so we're trying to draw people and create a walkable street wall along Route 81, so that we can get that feeling that everybody has been after. I, we've been doing these sessions for 20 years, there's nothing new here except putting the town garage on that site and the HES stuff. People have said they want the same stuff for over 20 years. So, but we're trying to get a walkable network, a street wall between these buildings close together, so kind of like Chester or Deep River. And, but we're talking about drawing that energy away in a town with a population of 8,000, and we can only support so much. So if we abandon the Route 81 corridor and push it, push stuff up there, it's just illogical to me. And to buy an expensive property in order to do that, it's illogical.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, Maurice Adams from Adam. This is a different viewpoint on this. I lived and worked in Miami, Florida for 25 years, and I participated in charrettes like this. We had a whole different situation. We had literally millions of people moving into South Florida, and it's how do you plan on handling them, how do you do the community centers, how do you put all these things together? So I moved to Connecticut, and what I was assuming, you go to Essex, White's Steakhouse has been vacant for two years. You go to Chester, which I love, Elodie Restaurant has been vacant for two years. We don't have the demand here. I thought you would have much more in this planning session about how to build demand rather than how to handle demand if we had it. And for example, I take my granddaughters to Jack's for breakfast. I love going to Jack's for breakfast. But I look around and I say, "You had a great breakfast, but you're closed for lunch. Why children for lunch?" And what do you think they're saying? There's no demand for lunch. I think we should be focusing a lot more on how to build demand rather than just how to put in little houses and things here and there.
At no time was that part of our mandate. I know you've had a marketing plan before, sure, fairly recently, have, know about your marketing?
Your marketing study in 2018, last year.
Yeah, so you have one, you have that, the data we drew on in terms of your, your black market leakage, we could identify. That will become, the committee is going to take over for this, will begin to look at that in terms of the detail.
I, I don't understand that. So you're talking about, you looked at three different alternatives for acquiring Rossi property and developing it, but based on what demand?
Based upon the market leakage.
The market?
Yes.
Oh, so prevent people from driving to Middletown or Chester's to go eat?
Not preventing, but capturing that market.
If you look at food, if you look at food, if you look at food and restaurants, this town, round numbers, this town spent, all of you spent $16 million a year on food and restaurants, okay? About eight, eight million of that is in town. The other eight million goes somewhere else. So the idea is, what your own market analysis says, before any of us were here, said you could try and capture some of that eight million dollars for market. I understand what you're saying about the market. I live in Middleford, Gaitas doesn't serve breakfast anymore, you know, I remember in '66. So it's just a, it's a changing world, no doubt about it. It's a changing world, and how do we do it? And we talked a lot about the trails and the connections and all these different things, and find some way to attract people to the centers where, and then that grows into development. I'm not saying there's no developers out there that are coming to Higginham tomorrow or that are knocking on my door that want to build in Higginham. It's about building the market, like you're saying, and making it an attractive place that gets people.
Bill, just, just what you said on that one, I would have thought we would have spent much more time on how to develop these trails in order to bring in people, or do anything to bring people into our community, so that we have the demand for restaurants and group ups.
That was in the recommendations.
But we didn't spend our time on that. We spent all the time on the Rossi property. What about a rails with trails to Middletown, was that mentioned?
It's in the report. Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It was in the 90, in the 90-day plan.
It's in the reports.
Oh, yeah, it's in the report.
Okay.
Yeah, you got good coverage.
And there is connection plans, and there are kinds of plans in the report as well. I don't think you could see Terry's connections plan very well.
The connection plan, but there is a connection. But you didn't check, so I couldn't tell what else.
I need, I need, I need to make sure everyone gets to the ground. Thank you. Jeff, go ahead, Jeff.
And Jeff, there is one. If I'm getting the gist of what all this is about, is purchasing the Rossi property is more about getting us to be able to be in control and much more in the driver's seat for what to do in the center. And the town garage, whether it goes there or not, becomes somewhat of a sidebar conversation as far as whether it goes on that property and limits the amount of other stuff that could go there.
Correct.
Or whether it goes out of town, and then more stuff can go on that property. But as long as the town owns it, we have more control and can solicit the business rather than simply constraining developers to the zoning rights. My question is, is that if we purchase the property and put ourselves in that seat, and then we go forward with one of these plans, whatever it is, whether the town garage there is not, or whether it's 100% retail, mixed use, whatever it is, when those entities end up there, do we rent the space to them from the town, and the town is now a landlord collecting direct rents? Do we sell it and subdivide it to these owners and put it back in the private hands, and now our, our revenues are simply coming from tax money? And then we then relinquish the control that we had, and we get back in the same position we're in right now with Rossi, where we had control, we developed it, we sold it off, and now that person could then do something else with it.
Right.
So is the plan to retain permanent control over this and/or what?
All future decisions. So let's, so let's take the town garage out of the picture, and the town says, "Yes, okay, it is unacceptable to have the five-acre Rossi property there because it's a non-conforming use, it has a manufacturing use, it has a warehouse use. They can do whatever they want there, pretty much, that is just undesirable, doesn't work for, for our center." So if we decide, yes, we want to buy it from the Rossi's, we acquire the property, then we would look at it, say, "Okay, what can we, what can we allocate for sewer?" And then we make a decision. Are we selling it? Are we keeping it? What are we doing? Are we creating a, a green space? Are we developing the front? What are we doing with it? How, it's all to be decided in the future. Portland, the Brownstone Court, you know, was a, was a really interesting one that they did. It really had a lot of vision in that, they, Portland owns Brownstone Court, and they get a percentage of his money, of his profit every year. So they're making far more than they would have made by just selling it and collecting taxes. So that's a good point. Whether the town is in a position to own and manage property, I don't know, but very often, it makes sense to continue to own it. But those are all decisions that would have to be made in the future.
Yes, sir.
Your name, Eric Kesselberg. Lockling Roads. Got a question, just to Bill's point here. Did you say, Bill, that Rossi had planned to develop it but did not because of sewer was the, was the issue, or not? What, what kind of sewer does you mean?
Back when there was a, a market for multifamily development, the Rossi's were, had proposals to build 89 multifamily units there, basically apartment buildings, if the town provided a sewer system, which is a package treatment plant going all the way to Connecticut River, roughly 12 million dollars.
Yeah. I've been a journalist for 20 years, so I, I've had a lot of meetings, I see a lot of, I, we write things down, and we take, you know, we have notebooks, stuff like that. I have a tape of Andy Becker at that meeting, and Andy clearly says that he plans to do an onsite sewer disposal system. So he had planned, I don't, it wasn't 80 units, it was much less, but he had planned not a, a black box system as you proposed, but he planned to, to take care of itself. Why Andy abandoned that, we don't really know. Couple other things he said at that meeting. He said, "All the buildings on the property are beyond their useful life, shouldn't be knocked down." The third thing he said was, "I don't know what's in the ground. This has been an industrial site for 150 years. The only way I can get commercial, but housing on this, is probably to cap it and to put at least four or five feet of fill on it." Why he decided not to go through with that, it wasn't sewer. He says it clearly, and you can, you can take a look at that if you'd like. The other thing Andy says, which is very interesting, he said that he had been approached by the town to, to put the town garage there, and he said, "We were against it as property owners, because the reason it's, 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 for the same reason that it's in a bad position down in the center of the town, we wouldn't want it on our property, because it doesn't make sense for the town." He obviously changed his mind on that, I'm not really sure why.
What was the thing, what were you talking, you're talking about?
We're talking 2015.
2015.
And we can get you a copy, I'd gladly get you a copy of that, if you, if you'd like to see it. The other thing, too, I think it's important to say, we had a situation with Adam Elementary School here, where I think the consensus of the town was the feeling that things were happening without public input, you know? That things were being decided by a small group of people, okay? I have a sense personally, I think there's some other here, that there's a sense here that this is a, that there's, there was, Bill made it very clear on Facebook that he wanted this Rossi thing to happen, he thought that was the best thing, and now you guys have come up with the same thing. So I think, I think as planners, you need to be sensitive to our history and the fact that things have, have happened in this town without really public consensus, you know? And so I would really urge you to really talk to the people in this town, really get a sense and follow what they want, and not, even, I don't care if you have 30 or 40 years of planning, you know? People had a sense, and, and when I talked to people, it came out of that meeting, I didn't attend.
Which meeting?
The meeting. I asked them what the consensus was, and, and it was HES, to keep it some kind of civic use or public use, and to move the town garage out of the center of town. So that was the, those are the people I talked to. So this is a little bit of a surprise to me, okay? So that's, you know, as I say, I don't have a question, but those are my comments.
I think one of the things, if you all read the report, I think, one thing that motivated me the most, or a couple of things. One was smart growth and smart growth principles. And smart growth principles say that in fact, you build, you build your civic functions where, in, in, in terms of a nucleus, you take advantage of what you have now that you don't, and that you move to a collective center.
Yeah.
And if you look at, you go, I'm sure a lot of you already have done this, but I was motivated most by smart growth. I was, I'm motivated also here by desire to have civic I was, I'm motivated also here by desire to have civic functions remaining in the downtown.
Are you considering public works civic functions?
Yes, I am.
Because many of, yeah.
I think, I, I, I wasn't.
You know, many of us don't. Don't. Civic, civic functions as, as town halls.
And libraries.
Right.
Right, right, right. I was, I was thinking of that, it's not, it was not.
Not traditional civic.
Not, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't top of mind.
Civic function engages the community.
But, but I think the base of the point I'm making is, is that, look, you're going to decide on this at the end of the day, but I'm saying in effect that there were factors out of planning that said in effect this may be a place for it.
Okay.
And you go to somebody else now. Wait a minute, you are?
Jenny Murphy.
Okay.
We've been here for forty, so here. It seems there is, people have talked about this for forty years, nobody's done anything about it. So now we have a plan, it looks to be like at least the action, the ninety day action things should go forward regardless of where the town garage ends up. I mean, that, there are obviously things that, that we need to hash out more, but professional people that know what they're doing and have done this for years and years and years, not, maybe some people here are in that category, but they've seen this before, these ninety day things, and this is what needs to happen if anything's going to happen. Those things I think should go forward and then the other stuff can be worked out as well.
The, the trade phrase is that planning moves a seventy percent fat to thirty percent leap of faith and that it drives citizens nuts because they'd like to be used there, thirty percent leap of faith. Yes?
My name is Gail Bannett of the Freedom, and I am not opposed to the town garage being the center of town, I think it can be done artificially if necessary. I've lived here thirty-five years and it seems to take us, it seems that we work on a geologic time scale to do things like find a new firehouse, find ball fields, you know, find the transfer station which ended up in the same place. And it seems like we just get into these, people grab each other at the, the neck and try to strangle people because, okay, we move the town garage out of the center of town, but it's now that wherever you want to move it to, the people that live there are going to be just as upset about it there than if it's in the center of town. And I do believe, I believe in smart growth principles as you mentioned. I only live like eight tenths of a mile down eighty-one, so I'm close to the villages anywhere else and I just wanted to put my two cents worth.
Thank you. Okay, yes, sir, you are?
Yeah, I'm Phil Thompson, I've got a little thing. How much input have you gotten from the current businesses in town who also have a stake in the outcome of this?
That was a big recommendation, is there really wasn't a real voice from the current businesses. And that was, one of the recommendations was the Economic Development Committee really should push for them to organize, to create a merchants association, to create something so that they have a voice. I mean, in, in a lot of communities, you would have had the merchants association saying, we want this, we want that. That doesn't exist here. So that's, as far as I know. So that's something that is in the recommendation. There really wasn't a lot of input. Terry from the Package Store was there, a few others I'm sure were there, but there wasn't a lot of input from what those businesses want. It's critical.
I'm going to take five more.
Ed?
Just a question.
Yeah.
Was there any consideration given with respect to the town garage as to whether having it in the center of town was practical from the point of view of being able to get to the, the, the facility, be able to respond to needs, it would be better at the center of town as opposed to outs, you know, outside of the center, maybe down in the periphery of the town? I'm just asking, is that, was that any of the considera, was that a consideration?
No. And, and what we did in our shop, we had, we talked about this an awful lot, and one was, could, could a DPW garage be put in there environmentally safe? Could it be put in there in a way that, that it would look like something that you'd be proud of? Could it be there, could it be put in there and contribute to smart growth? And we, we said that in our minds, the only way that it could go in there is to meet all the environmental standards, all the need to design standards, provide become an amenity in part and that, and that in fact only if those occur. But the point of it is, is that clustering to us was something that we felt was very, very important. And then you have a result, and Gary, you can just, you'll have plenty of an opportunity to do that. But what we're saying in effect, based on a set of these circumstances, that indeed there is a need for that to be there, it'd be something that you're proud of if these conditions are met. Now I'm going to get four more.
Sharon Challenger. I'm just asking your personal opinion, if we had, let's say, you know, Terry Goddard comes to town and we have the money all of a sudden to do something within those ninety days, what would you say would be the most important thing to do?
Wonderful question. Thank you. First thing is, is the city went on, that was just done, is, is your sewer system. Move forward on that. The second is, is work hard as you can to get an educational function in the HES. That, that, that would be, that would be the second. The third is entering the negotiations with the Rossi's in terms of the property regardless of use. That's a must. Or, of inventory, to get control of the site because what in effect, if you go through there, it becomes an arc of downtown with the town properties and the other property and the Hess property. And I thought that was something that was very important. But to answer you directly, first question to me is solve the solution. I'll go next.
Can I have a hijack for me for just a minute?
Sorry.
Can I feel like I can do this? Can I see a picture again? There's a lot that's been discussed tonight. How many people support, just in this room, the community septic system for the downtown area? Whether the town garage is there or not, or other functions? All right, give me a marker for moving forward. Thank you.
I'll, I'll be hijacked.
Gentlemen, the great, Jane, the great first.
Go ahead.
Well, walk one moment. And twenty-five years ago, before we bought a present house, we lived on the landing. And what the landing had was scale, a scale with Connecticut River. And in none of what I've been hearing thus far do I get any sense it's just going to be anything compelling, really some of the, on the gentleman that down there was talking about, that sense of go-to, a real destination. That was really interesting in the Sher Park table in the charrette that we were part of. We talked about a walk between, basically close to the river and all the way up to the reservoir. I was sufficiently inspired by that, that to actually walk up to the reservoir, should never, in all these years, have never actually been there. And it is not Victoria Falls, but it's pretty damn impressive. What that, when you go, there's a, there's a wonderful little bridge and there's water pouring down and there's the, and the access point to it is very easy, it's all there in terms of paths. If that could be a place for picnics, do a little bit of a beach, very inexpensive working what, what we have and a true destination for what, for what would bring people to do things. And I'd like to see something that had that kind of scale.
I think that in our report, we've come up, I need to develop a map that shows all these things are as a first step. And I think we asked to get some of the capital projects made, I guess here to do that.
There were also people from the blue and green wave that were showing connections that you already have and I plan to say work with them to, to develop those connections. And I think your, your projects would be perfect, perfectly aligned with what they are talking about and what they want to do.
Okay, go ahead, you are?
Mr. from the LA, I'm a resident of Higginham. So for argument's sake, let's say the town purchases Rossi's property. For argument's sake, let's say that the town garage is built on the property. Because it's my understanding that there actually is some sort of urgency with respect to enlarging the town public works department, correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the current garage, town garage is inadequate. So we lease ten thousand square feet from the Rossi's and we pay every month to have ten thousand square feet from the Rossi's, month to month.
My concern is that if the new town garage is constructed on the Rossi property, but the front development doesn't happen because there's no urgency for that. And I think that's critical to moving the garage to that site. And what guarantee is there that that development will occur to mask our eye or disguise the town garage? So I'm not convinced that's.
My goal in all that is, is how do we deal with the Rossi property? We can't, can't just exist the way it was, the way it is, okay? And we had discussions with Ted Rossi when the brewery wanted to go in the front building. And that whole thing blew up because Ted Rossi said, I'm not doing anything until I get my sewer system. Those were his words. And I'll leave it for my future generations. Okay, so he has no intention of doing anything because he makes a good revenue on that property. So how do we deal with that property? And from a development point of view, there is no, our market study said there is no market, that we cannot support new construction in this town because the rents are too low and the sale prices are too low. So we, and, and, and the cost of construction keeps going up. So we can't support that. So when you look at a development and you, basically, land development isn't that complex, you, you have a pro forma that says, these are our expenses, these are our revenues, okay? So how does that work? So if all of a sudden we do a town garage in, in a portion of the property and we have the rest of the land available for a development, the big cost in a development pro forma is land costs, is taxes, and all of a sudden we can write down the cost of land to attract a developer, work with them on taxes, work with them on other infrastructure, and we could drive, the town could drive the development and attract a developer because we could make those numbers work where the return on investment makes sense. So that's, that's the whole thinking of how do we deal with this Rossi property? Because as I said, I look back and everything, and every plan was we have to do something on the Rossi property and nothing's been done on the Rossi property for twenty-five, thirty years. So how do we do that? How do we make it happen? And the way to make it happen is to acquire it. Now if we can just acquire the Rossi property just because we want to develop it, then all, all, all for it, let's do it. But to get the people to vote for it, does it make sense that we address the town garage issue and provide land for development that doesn't overwhelm our community septic system? There's just a lot of things that come together, but it's our ability to own it and incentivize the development, then we could attract developers.
So that's what a developer's RFP does. It basically says, here's what we own, we can give this land to you for dollars if, if you develop it the way the town needs it developed. So then if you own the land, you actually control how a developer comes and develops that land. Whether you then sell it to the developer or whether you keep control, that's all different. And part of it is to understand that this project wasn't about Rossi or the town garage, it was about Higginham, etc. This is one aspect of it. Whether you actually put the garage there, or you don't put the garage there, you move the garage out, that is all up for further consideration.
But you did spend all three options talking about the Rossi property.
The only trials present in the work of the Rossi property. So don't say it's not about.
Agree, I would agree with you there, that yes, the three were still.
What other property would be, what other property would be redeveloped other than the Rossi?
Bill, can I, can I be quiet, please? Okay, how y'all doing? Y'all all right, everybody all right? Okay? Thank you. Bill, I'm going to come back, I already got you. Who hasn't spoken? Go ahead.
I just, uh, Bill, I guess this is.
Have you spoken?
No, I haven't, sorry, Joe, it's up. So has the Rossi property really been, you know, assessed by a real estate agent or any professional? I mean, they, we have a price for the Rossi property, but do we really know if that property is worth that money? Do we know, you know, what environmental problems there are on that property, what testing needs to be done? I mean, it seems like there needs to be a lot more research put in before we agree to a two point, I think it's two point two million dollar price tag to just go ahead and, and move forward and buy this.
Absolutely. And everybody focuses on, on the picture. John's presentation in the ninety day agenda, it said planning and zoning advances it to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen authorizes the first selectman to negotiate a lease agreement or a purchase and sale agreement with them, subject to, it's right in the, right in there, subject to environmental due diligence, structural analysis of the buildings, a negotiation of the price, et cetera, et cetera. So that's all a next condition. And then once the Board of Selectmen does that, and there's a purchase and sale agreement, then it goes to the Board of Finance to authorize funding to do that due diligence. And then that due diligence happens, then it comes back. As I said before, I figured it out, how many meetings, if every meeting went perfect, one night, boom, 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 it's seventeen public meetings that would have to happen before a shovel hit the ground to put the town garage on the Rossi property. Seventeen public meetings. So there's your public discussion, every one of them has a public discussion.
There would be a town meeting vote, too?
There would be a town meeting vote, yeah.
Why not a referendum?
No, I would be.
A referendum, town meeting.
We're jumping, thank you. Thank you.
I am, having been a real estate developer, it would seem to me we basically have just told the Rossi people, they can name their price because their property is so pivotal to the revitalization of Higginham that we can't redevelop it unless we own their land. Their property is appraised by the town at one million dollars. We just bought a property next door for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that has a twenty-nine thousand foot building and a very valuable potential sewer system, septic system. How can we possibly get a fair price for the Rossi property given the drama that has evolved since we began the study?
But the Rossi property has been critical to the revitalization of Higginham Center from the very beginning. And every plan that I've seen is how do we deal with the Rossi property?
Okay.
So, you know, I, I, I understand that. And that's, but the reality is, it's a buyer and a seller. You know this, you're in the business. So, you know, there's a buyer and a seller. What, what works? So if we look and we looked at different places in town and because of the new construction, we were talking six million dollars for a new public works facility. Here, because we're using existing steel frame buildings, we're talking four million dollars plus the land for development.
Okay, I think, I'm, I'm going to sum up. I, I think first, I think, I think the best thing here, that I just got out of this in terms of what Bill was talking about, is I don't know if it's going to be seventeen or twenty, but this is the start. And it's clear in this room that there is not a consensus at this point in terms of where to go. And if anything, I, I heard that this is going to be a difficult, not to crack. And that, but the point of it is, is that just things on the table may start to fall there. In the report, there's a heck of a lot more than, than just this. I mean, it's materialized on the HES, on septic, on the design standards, on, on trails, and gee, take a look at those as well. Before, I think the last I heard is about two hundred pages, about two hundred pages generated out of the two meetings that we've had. Somebody mentioned that there, there isn't much new in here, when it says to me that some things have been simmering for a long time and that, and that basic concerns that unmet do come hot button issues. And so that I think that there are elements in there that may spark you even further in that. But the civility of it is this, is that in effect you have to face it. Civilly. And that there are different ways of looking at this and that indeed it doesn't work on the site and then it would be just because of reasons of environment or, or, or other restrictive activities, we'll, we'll have to find some.
And I, and I will post the, the PowerPoint presentation tomorrow morning and you'll see all the other recommendations. For instance, Bob here brought up community septic system. In there, there's a ninety day action plan of lots of things that the Board of Selectmen and everyone else has to do to start that process. You know, when, when, when I can get lots of restaurant people that I know to come here, I've had several look at the jail. So there's no shortage of restaurant people. They, they think whatever, they cook so well, they go anywhere. So, you know.
You're capturing my meeting.
I can get a lot, good. I can get lots of restaurant people. Well, let's say Citizens Bank is a restaurant. Well, can't do it because you need the community septic system. So if that's a big priority, it's in there. Everything is in there about the ma, the maps, the plans, everything else for the trails, it's all in this report. So it's far more than, than the town garage.
Yeah, where can we get all the, in the Board of Selectmen, can we get a copy of this report?
Yeah, well, it's fine.
It's slightly, I have the same.
We have a few, no, it's not done yet. We have a few, no, it's not done yet. We have a few more drawings to do and we'll post to the PowerPoint and once it's done, it'll be posted.
Is it going to be posted on the town site or Facebook? Because I couldn't find about this meeting except on Facebook.
Town site. Town site.
This report going to be on the town site too or just a PowerPoint?
The report, there are some final drawings that have been done.
Yeah, I know, it's ready.
Once that's done, I will post it on, on the town website and I will publicize it.
It's a PowerPoint and a report, eventually it's going to be on the town website.
Eventually, yeah.
Last word, go ahead.
Oh, I'm lucky.
You are?
Jay Verdi from Higginham. Unfortunately, I was here a little bit late, but is there, given that the Rossi property sort of is... I hate to interrupt you, but is there, from a zoning perspective, requirements that already exists or can be levied that would say, hey, at least buffer it, hide it for now? Because we don't know whether we'll ever do anything with it. Because it does detract as it currently exists, right? So the conversation is, is the zoning anti-light requirements that currently exist require already today some buffering? And if not, in the plan of development in the future, would it make sense to say, okay, look, that situation must agree, we'll just buffer that? And then we'll go work the church, which is about to be vacant, we'll go work the school that's already vacant, we'll work the Scoville Mills that are already vacant, we'll work the Citizen Bank already vacant, and just buffer that? And that alone would actually interest, bring people to the village, just that one thing.
That, that is, are there elements of that in the report?
No, but if the Rossi's don't want to buffer it, they don't have to buffer it.
Is there anti-light requirements that...
No, no. It is a legal non-conforming use. They, one of their comments when it got really contentious about the brewery falling apart, one of the Rossi's said, "We're going to pile 1,000 pallets on there." So they have the right to do that because it's been there for so long.
Okay.
That's been challenged in court. There was a whole court case about the, the legal status of that property.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.